It is recording.
Good evening, for those who might be out there. There's nobody there. I'd like to make a motion to enter executive session to discuss personnel matters related to particular employees.
Okay.
Favor?
Hi.
Bye. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our April 19th workshop. The primary focus of our workshop is the chapter 134 update. We have a bit of business to take care of first. We were in executive session to discuss the employment and history of individuals. Jeff, Eliza made the motion to adjourn, Catherine seconded, and we all voted aye. Opportunity to request to vote or modify or add agenda items? Any requests?
No.
Announcements? None for me. Reminder that we have a public session on May 8th regarding Clear Trail, the Halvein Gym, the big gym, sorry, the little gym at seven o'clock. It would be a joint session of this board, the trustees of the Village of Nelsonville, and town board of Townville. Okay.
Spring and Bloom, this is Saturday?
Oh, yeah, that's right. There was a bunch of stuff going on this weekend. I think Little Stony Point had an event on Saturday as well. Yes, and Memorial for Trustee Barrister John Tebow. From two to four on Sunday. Okay, so first, we, any discussion before we close the public hearing on the budget? I received Noel for the comment from Public?
None.
So anyone here wish before we close the public hearing wishing to comment on the budget? And so make a motion to close the public hearing on the budget? Collins Favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, so what happens next? We don't actually vote until the 26th on the budget. That leaves time for Michelle to make modifications based on any feedback post-public hearing. Obviously, her job is going to be easy. It also allows time for, if there are any adjustments in state aid or federal aid, you can make those adjustments before the final is released. Okay, so discussion for amended chapter 134 zoning. We have with us, let's see, in the room, we have three members of the ad hoc working group with us tonight, Jesse St. Charles, actually. Two are here at the table, Laura and me, Jesse St. Charles, Eric Worth, who is the standing chair of the zoning board, Donald McDonald, who's the chair emeritus. So I would, when we get to discussion, the discussion portion after Ted makes a presentation, if there is anything that you would like to add to help trustees in their conversation, please feel welcome. Our consulting planner Ted Fink is with us, and he's going to walk us through the process of how we arrived at the draft of chapter 134 that's in front of us. And as a reminder, this is a trustee workshop. The primary focus of the evening is for the trustees to hear from Ted and ask questions of Ted. We will have public comment at the end, but the primary focus is the trustees in conversation. Hi, Ted.
Good evening. How are you?
Well, how are you?
I'm fine. I'm ready to go. So if you'd like me to share my screen, I can get started on that.
You go ahead. I made you co-host.
Okay. Sounds good.
Also, our bill of attorney is with us, John First. Hi.
Okay, so thank you, Mayor Foley and board members. What I'd like to do tonight is just to walk you through some of the highlights of the work that's been ongoing for, well, let's say 17 years now. This is work that started actually in 2006, when the village board appointed a special board for comprehensive plan and local waterfront revitalization program. And it's gone through a number of different transformations over the years. And so I'd just like to, for the record anyway, provide you with a good background on how we got to where we are today with the proposal for amendments to chapter 134, which were, I believe they were made public a week ago, last Wednesday. And that's the zoning, the zoning map, the table of uses, the table of dimensional requirements. So all of those are up for everyone to to review now. And and I understand that there's a public hearing that's going to be scheduled in the near future, or has been scheduled, and that I'll be available for that as well. But at least to give you an inkling of what's in the document that you've got now, I'd like to walk you through that. So first of all, there has been a tremendous amount of civic-minded volunteers that worked on this process to try and identify a vision for residents of Cold Spring, for the future of the village. And what we've done throughout this process is to adhere to state law, first of all. So can everybody see the slide that I just changed to? New York State Village Law? Okay, good. I'm not operating this as a typical PowerPoint. I'm going to go through the slides because it just makes it easier. You can see the, each of the slides I'll be getting to on the left of the screen, only so that I can go back if we need to go back to any individual slides and talk about them. So, anyway, so to begin the process, we have to start with New York State Village Law. The enabling laws that have been enacted by the legislature provide the direction to the village in everything that it does as far as planning and zoning is concerned. And it's a recognition of a very important case that was decided many, many years ago by the New York State Court of Appeals, the state's highest court. And essentially, it said that planning is the essence of zoning. Without it, there can be no rational allocation of land use. It's the insurance that the public welfare is being served, and that zoning does not become nothing more than just a gallup pole. And that pretty much sets the stage for this. So in the 1990s, New York State Village Law, it was woefully out of date, much like Cold Spring zoning. And the New York State Legislature went through a comprehensive multi-year effort to update New York State Village Law, as well as town law and general city law, the three municipal entities that exist within the state. And each one of those laws, those enabling laws, has counterpart regulations that essentially say that zoning and planning are among the most important powers and duties granted by a legislature to government for the purpose of protecting public health, safety, and welfare. The most important part of this, though, is that all land use regulations must be in accordance with the comprehensive plan. And so when the, when the special board embarked on preparing a comprehensive plan and a local waterfront revitalization program, it did so with the, with the idea that this would eventually lead to the development of the comprehensive plan and the local waterfront plan would both lead to zoning changes within Cold Spring. So 2012, about a six-year period that the special board worked to prepare a new comprehensive plan for the village. The, probably the most important policies that relate to what we're working on today is to to implement the overall vision for Cold Spring. Preserve and enhance the small-town historic neighborly, diverse, and safe character of village life. This was done through the process. There was a 2007 public opinion survey that went out to village residents. There was a very good response rate, about 20% of all of the village residents responded to that survey. And, and those were all embedded within the comprehensive plan to give some evidence that the village board had reached out to village residents to try and determine what are the most important characteristics to protect and preserve within the village of Cold Spring. So one of the very first policies in the comprehensive plan was to review and revise the current zoning and land use regulations to recognize building forms and streetscapes to make the regulations internally consistent in keeping with the community's vision and the goals that were included in this plan. The second policy, recognize the unique characteristics of the village historic neighborhoods by adopting standards to protect and reinforce the character in such areas as shared relationships of structures to streets, sidewalks, building height and mass, porches, root character, window styles, lot and street width. So a lot of the kinds of things that zoning can do to, to ensure that the current regulations are going to be, are going to bring the village to protecting and preserving its small-town historic and neighborly character. So what are some of the other policies, important policies that were driving it? Well, some of these things have, even though they were adopted more than 10 years ago, they have a lot of relevance for the trends that we've uncovered as we've gone through a three-year period with COVID and with changes in the demands for, for housing, especially affordable housing within the Hudson Valley. So one of the, one of the recommendations from the 2000 plan is to require a variety of housing types and sizes in major new projects, consistent with a traditional village neighborhoods. Accommodate a variety of age and income groups and residential preferences. And then to allow single-family, two-family, multifamily cottage dwellings, live-work and work-live units, among others, all with performance standards to control impacts. And that was one of the, one of the guides that was also used by both code update committee as well as the work group. Other ones that, that also relate to the current zoning regulation, to review the land use regulations to ensure clarity, internal consistency, explore the use of form-based zoning for new development and redevelopment. And form-based zoning is, it really differs from traditional zoning that is based upon simple numbers and text by also including graphic examples, graphic illustrations that provide a better visualization of the textual and the numeric standards that are incorporated within zoning. The final one here, before we move on, is to amend the zoning code to require appropriate scale setbacks, streetscape, and design features consistent with village character. So these are some of the more important village policies, adopted village policies that have been driving the work that's been ongoing for the last few years. One of the things which, which I think the, the work groups have found is that based upon the review of the comprehensive plan, based upon the review of the current zoning regulations, traditional village could not be built today under existing zoning as it is. And this was reflected in the comprehensive plan on page 17, where this is a quote, "The village adopted its zoning law in 1967 that generally followed suburban models that, for the most part, ignored the existing pattern of development in the village." So one of the, one of the, the goals, of course, was to update it to today, to move away from the suburban models, to recognize that the village is a traditional, has more of a traditional urban form. And it became clear as the special board was working through development of the comprehensive plan and the local waterfront revitalization program that New York State was not going to approve an LWRP, a local waterfront revitalization program, until the zoning was adopted. But in its place, in addition to the comprehensive plan that was adopted in 2012, the village board also adopted a local waterfront revitalization strategy, which was a commitment by the village to implement the comprehensive plan and to move forward once the zoning had been updated with a development of a local waterfront revitalization program, which provides a lot of increased authority of the village to have control over agency actions. And when I say agency actions, these are actions of the state and federal government. Because once a local waterfront revitalization program has been adopted, state and federal actions have to abide by the policies that are adopted as part of the local waterfront program. So it is an important component of this to ensure that the zoning is in place in order to, again, seek the local waterfront revitalization program approval. So that was, that was going on at the same time. All right. Next one. So as far as the code updates are concerned, the plan was adopted in 2012. And what happened after that is it, it looked like it was going to be a daunting task to update the zoning. And so a grant was obtained from state government to allow the village to begin to implement the 2012 plan by updating the zoning. So one of the first actions was the village board appointed a code update committee. Marie Early was the chair of that committee, and her group worked for, from 2014 to 2021 to develop a series of code amendments, not only zoning, but also addressing the entire village code, because many of the other code provisions were also out of date. And so her committee worked very hard to, to get those all to the village board by the end of 2021. But due to the complexity of the zoning and a couple of the other code chapters, noise, and signs, they were dependent on the zoning, because the zoning had references in it to the noise chapter. The signage is part of the site plan and special permit review processes, so there was a close interaction with those two code chapters. So the zoning was put off for additional time in order to complete the zoning law as well as those other two chapters. So in the spring of 2022, Mayor Foley appointed a, an ad hoc working group to begin work on updating the zoning and completing the work where the C, Code Update Committee had left off. So trustee Bozey, Mayor Foley, myself, Paul Henderson, who provided consistency because he was a former code update committee member, Donald McDonald was the former chair of the zoning board and a code update committee member, Jesse St. Charles, a ZBA member, and the chair of the zoning board, Eric Worth, were all involved on the working group. And because of the tremendous knowledge, institutional knowledge that some of these members had, it made the task of trying to find out how to best match the comprehensive plan with the zoning update that has been presented to each of you today. And so it was, they put in an enormous amount of time. We've had meetings every week, multiple meetings every week to be able to coordinate all of the work efforts. And so that's, that's where we are today as far as the work group is, is concerned. But I wanted to, to just go over a little bit some of the challenges that were faced by the work group and as they went through and tried to develop goals for what were the most important things to, to get right in the zoning, so that it could be presented as it has been today. The first was to make sure that all of the code updates were consistent with the village comprehensive plan. And there are numerous recommendations in the comprehensive plan for changes to the zoning. So we did review those. And the second one is to ensure that future development is aligned with the village priorities, so Cold Spring has the tools to, to retain that traditional character, even though it is the character that was developed before zoning was in, in place. And what you're looking at here, this map, it's the historic districts map of Cold Spring. And it becomes immediately evident just by looking at the color, coloration that's been done for the vast majority of the village. The National Register District is shown in these yellow areas. It follows a path along Main Street with some of the side streets, West Point Foundry area. The Village Historic District encompasses all of the blue areas and includes the National Register Historic District. And that's all under the watchful eye of the HDRB, the Historic District Review Board. So some of the other goals that the work group had, had looked at and tried to accomplish was to reduce the burden on property owners, as well as village officials, by reducing the non-conformities that exist within the village. And you can see by looking at this map that the historic development patterns, you've got very small lots here. In this area, you have newer subdivisions where the lots are larger. You've got areas with cul-de-sacs. You've got large parcels here that, that still remain undeveloped. And you'll see that a little bit later when I present a land use, existing land use map that was developed for the comprehensive plan. Another one, another goal was to improve the accessibility of the zoning by using plain language and visuals as much as possible. That goes back to what I was talking about a few moments ago about the form-based zoning, where actually the form of development that is being prescribed is included in, in graphic illustrations within the zoning. Another goal was to regain compliance with current New York State Village Law. As I mentioned earlier, in the 1990s, there were a lot of changes that were made to New York State Village Law. Some of these things included the, the criteria that the zoning board must use before they provide approvals to area variances or use variances. There are certain changes that were made to the site plan and special use permit regulations in New York State Village Law. And so some of that effort was to, was to become as compliant as possible with New York State Village Law. Another one was to provide a more direct means of control over the future development that happens on the Marathon site. It's the last remaining undeveloped parcel, large parcel of land that exists within the village. And to ensure that any future development that happens there is done with minimal impact on the village by ensuring that there be a planned development of the entire Marathon battery factory site, rather than to allow a piecemeal build-out of that site, one lot by, at a time. As far as the contract with NYSERDA is concerned, there were specific requirements that NYSERDA had to, to try and encourage the village to come up with a zoning scheme that would reduce energy use by doing things like discouraging auto, more autos within the village by encouraging things like access to Metro North for computers, so that transit could be, become available for, more available for parts of the village that are vacant like Marathon. So those were, those were some of the things that NYSERDA included in the contract. There were other things as well, having to do with solar and so forth. But a lot of it had to do with what NYSERDA called metrics. How can we reduce greenhouse gas emissions by changing the patterns of development that would occur within the village? And finally, to finally complete the multi-year process that all began in 2006 with updating the comprehensive plan and enabling the village to be able to adopt and for the state and federal government to approve a local waterfront revitalization program that would align Cold Spring's policies and would provide direction to state and federal governments, state and federal government to ensure that any actions that they would take having to do with Cold Spring would be consistent with what Cold Spring wants. So why change zoning? I mean, that's, it's a question that people always ask. You know, we've got zoning, it's worked all these years. We've had this in 67. What's wrong with it? Why, why do we need to change it now? Well, I think one of the dilemmas that we have is that because most development happened in Cold Spring, before we even had zoning or a comprehensive plan, that's created more of a problem for having a consistent means of regulating development and redevelopment of existing lots within the village that were all developed before current zoning. And because the zoning was modeled pretty much on a suburban template, we have, we have that great diversity that exists in the different neighborhoods throughout Cold Spring. And in a moment, I'll get a little bit more into how that was, was worked upon by, by the, by the work groups. So part of the, the issue, and I think because we had so many zoning board members affiliated with both code update committee as well as with the, the work group, there was a recognition that the zoning board worked very hard to help residents determine how they can make changes to their house, reasonable changes, small additions, changes in one way or another that drove them into the zoning board for variances, because they didn't meet the strict dimensional requirements of the zoning. And that translates into a cost for, for local residents. It also translates into a lot of work for a board such as the zoning board. And so the idea here was to try and make new development fit the village character using some proven planning techniques that had been developed over the past 20 to 30 years and are in use now by hundreds of communities throughout the nation. And that's part of where the form-based code provisions came from. So starting here with the existing zoning, this is what we have in place. You can see the, the date of the zoning is September 10th, 2008. That's when it was last amended. It was amended, but the zoning map had not been updated since that time. And you can see the vast majority of the village is in the R1 or residential one-acre district. So regardless of the size of the lots that you see here, the smaller lots in, in the northeastern part of the village are quite different from the lots that exist in other areas of the village like this. We have West Point Foundry, it's zoned for heavy industry, as well as for office and light industry. We have the Marathon site, zoned for light industry and offices. We have up here, Putnam County Lands, zoned for industrial use. We have Mayor's Park. We have the Village Highway Garage and the sewage treatment plant, both zoned also for industrial uses. You can see that the, the business district stretches out along Main Street. There are other districts, the R3 district in this area, the B4, the B3. So we have business districts peppered out throughout the, the village. There's a small little portion of B1, the business district over here. So there's a variety of different zoning designations. And so one of the things which the, which the work group did was to sit down, analyze every one of these neighborhoods, to try and determine what are the prevailing sizes of the lots, what are the prevailing setbacks that houses have along the streetscapes of the various streets throughout the village. And one of the things which the work group came up with was the concept of having one overall residential district that would be essentially the same as the R1 district that was here with some modifications. But to take the neighborhoods, to describe these neighborhoods and their place in time when they were developed, and to use the kind of development that occurred at different points in time to develop zoning regulations that were calibrated specifically for the existing conditions that we have in these parts of the village. The, the blue here, this is what we were called, the older residential neighborhoods. Our N in yellow, these were called the newer residential neighborhoods. All right. And then there's large residential lots, because there are a number of large, you can call them estate-type lots where there were large houses. you can call them estate-type lots where there were large houses on much more acreage than existed in much of the old worker housing that existed in other parts of the village. The multifamily housing district exists right here, the two big multifamily developments at Forge Gate and I forget the name of this one. We have B1, B2 business districts. So the B1 again follows Main Street, goes down to Lower Main. The B2 is largely the Chestnut Street Business District. We have the medical and healthcare facility and senior citizen housing district where the senior housing development is located. And then we have the medical and healthcare facility in mixed-use district that exists. This is the planned mixed-use district. So that encompasses only the Marathon site within the village. And this is composed, I believe, of 23 separate lots. One very large lot that took in most of the old factory site. And then there were small, small lots that also were taken in as part of that. We have the Parks and Recreation District, that's a new district now that acknowledges the lands that have been protected within the village for parks and recreational purposes. Okay. We have a new district called the Civic Uses District that recognizes areas such as civic functions like the, the Village Highway Garage and the Sewage Treatment Plant and, and a few other parcels within the village. We have a new educational, religious and cultural to recognize places like Haldein and the churches and so forth. And then finally, a transportation corridor for the railroad operations. The final one here is the Scenic Viewshed Overlay District. This is something that was included within the zoning. It is inclusive of the entire village. And so the line that delineates the Scenic Viewshed Overlay District encompasses the entire village. And that is an overlay that presents an additional set of standards that new development and redevelopment within the village would have to acknowledge as part of, of any review process that goes on for, for new development and redevelopment. So to enhance residential districts, that really means looking at a variety of new tools that are available to retain the overall character of the village and to avoid incompatible new construction. So that, as I mentioned, was meant tailoring the bulk standards to what exists, correcting ambiguities in the code, thereby relieving the, the burden on landowners for any improvements that they may want to make. One of the, one of the recommendations in the policies in the comprehensive plan was to consider form-based code. And so those were added to the proposal that you have before you. And so this is done in a way so that the scale, the context and the design traditions of the village can be visualized and clearly communicated to residents that may want to make changes to their houses or to their lots. And we looked at many communities that have already adopted form-based code provisions. They're, they're actually called hybrid form-based code because you can have a, a standard zoning. You can have a solely form-based code where everything is visual. And then there are many communities that have chosen a middle route, which is to combine the best of, of text-based zoning with a form-based illustrated zoning to incorporate them. And so this was done for, for Cold Spring code. You know, one thing, before I, before I leave that, one thing I did want to point out is that, you know, the mayor has spoken about, about setbacks and compliance with the code. And that what's happened is that on some of the blocks, some of the new development that's occurred has been too deep and they don't align with the streetscapes that exist in, in many portions of the village where there is some uniformity. And I think one of the, one of the areas that was suggested was the intersection of High and Haldein where there was a building that burned down. And in order to rebuild that building, and this was a building that evidently was built before zoning came into place, there were multiple setback variances that were needed for the landlord to be able to just rebuild that building. So that's just a sort of example of the kinds of things that the work group strive to, to eliminate so that the zoning better match the existing condition. So as far as enhancing the residential districts, one of the things which, which was a goal was to provide clear development, clear direction, I should say, for development or redevelopment, to simplify and reorganize the zoning law where needed. And I'll give you an example. For instance, the site plan and the special use permit review and procedural requirements, you had to look at two very different parts of the zoning in order to be able to understand what were the obligations of an applicant if they required site plan or special use permit review and approval. So those have all been consolidated into one section now. The ZBA variance requirements in order to ensure that they needed, that they met state requirements had to be updated and reorganized. So those are the kinds of things that, that were done to ensure that the zoning was going to be consistent with New York State law. And so another area of, of addressing affordability was to open up the opportunity for accessory apartments in more areas of the village so that people would be able to use their house to be able to develop, you know, an accessory apartment that could be rented out so that the landowner was able to take advantage of the extra income to be able to support maintenance of the house, payment of taxes and so forth. But it also provides for a smaller dwelling unit that someone that is interested in renting would be available and could make it more affordable. The other thing finally was to ensure that whatever uses were developed and the density of development on the Marathon site, it was, I think it was most important to ensure that it was consistent with the existing neighborhoods within the village and that it wasn't going to be a development that was out of character with, with the village. So one of the things in terms of the reorganization was to develop a table of uses permitted by district. And in this table, each of the zoning districts are listed at the very top in this top row, all color-coded so that they matched with the existing zoning map. Every use that's permissible was listed and separated from residential uses, commercial uses, general uses. And then each of these cells contain either a P or a use that's permitted. So obviously, a one-family dwelling would be permitted use in the R O, R N, R L, the multifamily district. It would be a, a special permit in the B1, special permit in B3, permitted in the B4, permitted in the PMU. So that's the way that this thing was formulated. The SP means that a two-family dwelling would be subject to site plan approval. A one-family to two-family conversion would be permitted but subject to a special use permit. So that's why the different symbols, the S, P, the SU and the P have different connotations. So at one glance, you could come, come to this table, you could see which district allowed a use that you wanted to establish or maintain within the village. And it was a ready way to be able to do that. Anything that's shown by a hyphen here, that would be a prohibited use in the district. And this is all explained in the zoning. Okay, so moving along with the, the second big task for the work group. And this was to develop not only the standards for the Marathon site, but also to develop a process that matched the, the recommendations that were made by the comprehensive plan. So first, just a review of the recommendations for Marathon. Address the potential for carefully planned redevelopment of the Marathon site so it is well-integrated in the fabric of the community. And I think that was the most important of, of the recommendations to ensure that whatever development happens on the Marathon site, that it's going to look like it belongs in the village of Cold Spring. So that's consistent. And yet, I think everyone in the village knows that there are potential issues with the Marathon site because of the contamination that existed. But the EPA has been studying it, there have been testing, there have been regular reports that have been done. And both the EPA and the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation have both identified the site as having the potential for development subject to some conditions. And I've included in this a link to the EPA information that will provide further, further information about what, what can and can't be done on the site. And so this presentation will be provided on the village's website. So anybody that has this link will be able to access those EPA documents, they're public documents. And you can see for yourself how EPA and, and the New York State D E C have been studying and, and how they reached the conclusion that potential development on the site can happen. So finally, you know, retaining industrial zoning on the site, simply not aligned with a comprehensive plan. And what I wanted to point out in these two graphics is the difference between a standard zoning regulation that defines how a one-block parcel of land, for instance, is going to be controlled through things like density, use setbacks, parking requirements and maximum building heights. But it's really pretty silent on the actual form of development. Whereas using and integrating a form-based code has the potential to allow for a development pattern that can be much, much more easily calibrated to the kinds of existing development you have in Cold Spring already. So some of the other important policies that were reviewed by the work group as part of the second task, make appropriate access to and from Marathon a prerequisite for any development there. I think we all know that there's a severe constraint on getting to and from this part of the village. And so one of the things that was integrated into the, the planned mixed-use zoning district was a requirement that any new development that would occur on Marathon had to address, to ensure, had to address traffic to ensure that the development didn't create any problems, traffic problems above and beyond what, what already existed in that area. Another one was to consider rezoning the former Marathon site as mixed uses. So not only residential, but also recreational, open space, work-live units. And these are essentially units where somebody's living within their dwelling unit, but they also conduct their, their profession within that. And so it's a much, it's a little bit different than a home occupation where the home occupation, the principle of that is that it's primarily a living environment where someone works, but a work-live unit has both co-equal living and working goals. The other side of this was also to allow some small retail business and office uses. And so that was integrated into this, and I'll get in on and, and that in a moment as to how that's going to be limited so that most of the Marathon site will be devoted to a variety of different residential uses as well as recreational and space and work-live units. Another recommendation, plan policy is to ensure the environmental integrity and safety by making certain that a thorough study and remediation of contaminants is performed before development begins. That's been integrated into the planning process for Marathon. And if there's going to be commercial development on the Marathon site, encourage businesses that would be tax-positive and have low impact on the community in terms of traffic noise, et cetera. Okay. So what Task 2 did was to develop a process for permitting redevelopment using a three-step review and approval process. And that involves three things. First, the planning board would approve what's called a concept plan special use permit. And this is a more generalized conceptual plan of development that would be, would have to comply with a number of conditions on the type of development that would be planned for the Marathon site. And assuming that an applicant would seek approval of a concept plan special use. If that is approved, then the next step would be for the planning board to address site plan approval. And that's been split into two different steps. One would be preliminary approval of a site development plan, a more concrete example of the conceptual plan, but refined to the next step. And then to also provide for final site plan approval. And one of the, one of the driving forces behind having this two-step site plan approval process would be to ensure that the overall development was sound and was in accordance with the concept plan special permit that was issued. But to ensure that villages' services and utilities and schools and so forth were not overwhelmed by a development that would, would happen too fast to ensure that new development of Marathon could be absorbed into the village's resources that are provided by the village, by the school district and so forth. And just to give you a little example of what the work group faced, these are the permitted uses and also the code update committee as well. These are the permitted uses that currently exist in, on the industrial zoning for the Marathon site. And you can see here, number seven, I'll just point out a couple of them, manufacturing, assembling, so industry. You know, that's, that's there, and number eight is building materials and lumber. So if you want to think about a Home Depot on the Marathon site, I'm not sure that would, would fly so well in the village. But in any case, that's what the existing zoning has for the Marathon site. And so those have all been eliminated now by the proposal that you have in front of you for the planned mixed-use district. So calibrating this to what the village currently has, there were a number of analyses that were done. One was simply to take a close look at the U.S. Census of Housing. The last data that we have is 2010. And what that looked at, there is, has been, of course, the 2020 census, but the final numbers haven't come out for the village of Cold Spring, as far as I know. So total dwelling units, you've got 967 dwelling units in the village, 504 or 52% are single-family detached. You have a little bit more than 7% single-family attached, two-family units, about 13%, and then multifamily units, almost a third within the village. So that's pretty much the, the nature of the current village. And so one of the things that was introduced in, in the planned mixed-use district was to have a, a percentage mix that it would be a required mix where single-family, two-family, multifamily units and the third, and really the fourth option, what were called cottage dwelling units, which were recommended in the comprehensive plan. That was a fourth option that would be available to the Marathon developers, you know, should they come forward with a plan for the overall development. And the dwelling units that would be permitted on the Marathon site, it would be seven dwelling units per acre. And so in looking at principally the, the R O, the older neighborhoods within Uh, and so in looking at um principally the the R O, the older neighborhoods within the village, um, those are actually um right around seven dwelling units per acre when you look at the overall areas that are uh covered by that um that particular neighborhood in the village. So all of these different housing options have been um introduced as part of that to respect the traditional character. There are many standards, performance standards, um, and um and illustrations of the kind of development that is is desired within um the marathon site. Um, the non-residential development would be limited to somewhere between five and ten percent of the overall development. Um, and I think it's important to understand that um whatever development that happens on marathon is the last remaining large uh parcel to be developed in the village. It's got to meet new realities um faced by the environmental changes that we're seeing everywhere. And this includes changes in energy's energy supply and use. And so there are a number of 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 conditions of the special use permit uh that uh their performance standards that would require that any new houses built there have um uh have an absolute minimum amount of energy use. Um, and uh when you consider that um new development's going to be around for a hundred years or more to emphasize that um s- sustainable development is the approach that is being used by more and more communities to ensure that um they're environmentally sound and will be um around for a hundred years or more uh and not creating greenhouse gas emissions um for that hundred-year-or-more period. But will um will really be um a model for other parts of the village. And I think finally, um, on that one, uh, as far as uh finding alternatives to single occupancy vehicles, uh, that was all um incorporated into the planned mixed-use district through performance standards uh that would ensure that um there was a maximum, not minimum, about a parking for vehicles. So the idea here is to um um is to take advantage of the close proximity uh that the marathon site has, uh, not only to Metro North, but also to parks, the Hudson River, Main Street. Um, to truly make this a a community, um, a small community within a community, in other words, a new neighborhood, um, that's going to appeal to people that um may not want to have cars uh and may want to, you know, um uh only use their own two feet, their bicycles and and public transit to be able to get from point A to point B. So the third task um that uh that was um taken up was to ensure proper protection for Mayor's Park. Uh, and this is uh again, work that was begun by the code update committee um and then um followed on by the work group. Uh, and that is, you can see on this map, um, um, Mayor's Park, right here. This is the county conservation area. Um, you've got um Dockside showing up right here. This is the West Point Foundry Preserve um to ensure that these areas um and, you know, especially the area up here that was zoned for industrial, that that was properly protected through a new zoning district, the Parks and Recreation District. Um, and you know, the the policy was very streak-forward in the comprehensive plan, preserve Mayor's Park, uh, result, rezone Mayor's Park to recreation. Uh, so that was pretty much a no-brainer. And this will show you, um, this is an actual survey that was commissioned by the village board this year by Bedi and Watson, the land surveyors um in the village, that shows Mayor's Park right here, a park district, uh, as separate and distinct from municipal uses, um, uh, the civic district uh that will allow the village to continue to use this for municipal purposes for the future. Um, the others, of course, create a civic district um that recognizes the contributions of uh not only municipal government, but also um services that are provided in the district that have municipal um uh relationships to create a new educational, religious and cultural district that recognizes the schools, uh churches and other houses of worship, um, and things like um uh cultural uh facilities that exist within the village. Um, and so the idea here is that rather than um perpetuate the um the zoning of these areas for development purposes, that they now are recognizing the existing uh uses that have been um uh or have been in place for these uh for these areas for quite some time now. So finally, um, you know, this whole effort, the the chapter one thirty-four that that you have before you now, um, it's, it's a really an endpoint for the work that was started by the special board in two thousand six. Um, one of the things which uh has been integrated throughout the proposed uh zoning effort is to align eighteen years um of the community efforts with resident visions that were expressed um, you know, through all of the meetings. Uh, there were these hundred and twenty-nine residents and other contributors who volunteered their time during this period. Um, and this is all an effort to ensure that the land use regulations are in accordance with the comprehensive plan uh to ensure that the up-to-up-to-date zoning will afford the protections that are needed to adapt to today's fast-paced changes in the environment, in climate, and and in social changes as well. Um, the document, and I think it, at the end of the day, it provides flexibility to be able to make changes um throughout the village, but it also has the rigor to protect um the village that everyone loves. Um, and finally, um, when the zoning uh does get adopted, um, it will allow the village to go back to the state and to revisit with them um the whole notion that Cold Spring's end goal here that began in two thousand six was to develop a local waterfront revitalization program um while providing other essential protections. So I think that pretty much concludes the the presentation. I can, if you'd like, I can leave this up in the event you want to go back um and talk about any of the uh, any of the slides here. I can end my screen share. Um, I'll leave it up to you as to how you want to proceed.
Why don't we see your face, Ted? And then if we need to go back and reference, we can. Actually, we've got, we've got your.
Not a problem. Okay. Sounds good.
So we'll first open for board discussion. Uh, we also have John First available to us um as a resource. So I'll turn to my colleagues first to see what comments, questions you may have for either Ted or the village attorney.
Um, okay, uh, I can start.
Go ahead.
Great. Um, so Ted, you, first of all, thank you so much for all that effort that you and the, all of the multiple committees that have led it up to this um have put into it. We really appreciate the work that's been done, and I know it's been um a lot of time. Um, my first question has to do with, um, you had mentioned that um the comprehensive plan had required or requested a supportive diversity of income levels and housing types. And um you had mentioned that the, with the marathon development, now this is specific to that, that spot. Um, how, I I noticed, I read through it and noticed that there were a lot of different types of housing that was allowed there. Um, is there any requirement, for instance, any way of requiring the housing there to be affordable through, you know, with a range that reflects the current economic demographics of the village?
So if I, if I understand your question correctly, um, there are two ways. Well, I mean, there's a variety of different ways that affordability can be addressed. One is to uh adopt a, what's called an incentive zoning program that would um would require that any new development um that occurs is inclusive of a certain percentage of units. Um, having some affordability um benchmarks such as, uh, and the most typical one that's used by most communities is uh median household income that um, let's say, a developer comes in and wants to build twenty new houses. If you have an inclusionary zoning program, um, you could require that developer to uh ensure that of the twenty new houses, that there be a certain percentage, ten percent or twenty percent or thirty percent um that those percentage of those twenty houses um uh be allowed to um uh or be structured in a way where someone that makes either the median household income for Putnam County or below that, let's say sixty percent or eighty percent of the median household income, that the sale of that house would be tied in with that person's income. They would have to produce certain income, um, you know, uh, they would have to substantiate it. Um, there are many communities that have done that sort of a program. Um, it is something that could be um, could be done at a future time. I don't think at this point that um because of the complexity of a program like that, um, it, you know, most communities that I'm aware of uh takes them uh often years just to develop a inclusionary zoning program. Um, that wasn't the way that um the work group addressed the issue. Um, we addressed it directly by ensuring that single-family wouldn't be the dominant um housing type, that two families would be in there. Um, none of the four um dwelling unit types that um are allowable within the planned mixed-use district. None of them could um represent any less than twenty percent of the overall mix. So you could have twenty percent single-family, you could have twenty percent two-family, you could have twenty percent multifamily, um, you could have twenty percent cottage dwelling units. Um, and so it, obviously, everything would have to add up to a hundred percent overall. But there was that thought that if there was an allowance for multifamily, that multifamily is generally going to be more um uh more accessible for persons that don't have the ability to be able to afford a single-family house. Um, two-family actually provides the ability of people, of someone to purchase the entire building and to rent out one of the units in a two-family. Um, multifamily, I think there was a a concern that um there'd be some limits to the number of multifamily. Um, not only um the number of multifamily throughout the marathon site, so that couldn't um, um, you know, um, because of that twenty percent minimum, it couldn't uh be a dominant force within uh the marathon site. But it also, um, there is a requirement that there be no more than four units per multifamily building within um any building that's constructed for multifamily purposes within the P M U district. And that was um a nod to consistency with the village. So that um you had a a development of of multifamily that was at a smaller scale than many people may be familiar with in larger multifamily uh buildings that might have um ten or twenty or thirty uh dwelling units.
Of which we have a bunch in the village, that that was part of the discussion as well, the number of large-scale multifamily complexes in the village.
We also, uh, there, there's a stipulation about the placement, so that there isn't a kind of um all of the multi-unit, all of the multifamily are over here, and then all of the single-family are here, like what we have in kind of the old village, everyone is together. There's a multifamily next to a single-family, next to a duplex. And so there are requirements for that kind of um kind of village fabric integration. Um, and then just on the other piece on um allowing for affordability is also through the accessory units and allowing that throughout the village, so trying to create more housing opportunities through um through the zone code.
You have other questions? Um, thank you for answering. Um, the other question, another question I have is, um, you had said something about how the N A S R T A required um to discourage, you know, electric wastage or um inefficient energy use. And um does this new code in terms of new developments have requirements for um things like lead certification or passive construction, heat pump usage, no gas hookups, solar panels or electric car outlets in all garages? To directly.
Not for the village as a whole, um, because most of the development, um, uh, new development that will occur is going to be on the marathon site. Um, the marathon site does actually provide a model for other parts of the village, but rather than uh, you know, um, uh, applying this throughout the village as a mandate, it is mandated um in this code for the marathon site, that the new development there does have to meet certain um uh energy requirements. And so that's, if you look at one thirty-four dash twelve, there's a whole section of the code that, um, and what it's called, it's, it's the conditions on the concept plan, special use permit approval. And it includes a whole variety of measures um um in order to to gain greater um energy efficiency, reducing fossil fuel use and so forth.
Can I say something off of that? So we looked at, you know, kind of best-in-class around the country of um in terms of these kind of building standards. And we saw that Massachusetts has a kind of a super stretch code that seemed to be the best model to follow. Um, they lay out that um it's not a all-electric requirement, um, but but laid out different options of all-electric. Um, uh, you know, mixed fuel and then passive house. And depending on which one you choose, then there's um very strong energy efficiency requirements. So we're trying to push toward all-electric, but um allow for these different pathways. But, you know, the end result is a super energy efficient building. I mean, we think that New York is going toward all-electric anyway. And so we made sure that there's also provision in there that says that if that happened, you know, whatever um higher, if something passes that's stronger, then this will have to follow the stronger standard. But this at least gets something in there. And then, um, you know, we're eagerly awaiting a stretch code from New York State and new stretch code that then the village board could consider applying for the whole village. But at this point, it's still in development. So we wanted to make sure that there's something really strong there um in the meantime.
Could I jump in, Chris, or can you? Uh, just because on your electric side, um, I was wondering if there's a way uh on Main Street as things change over to uh require new service to go, at least put conduit under the sidewalk. So one of these days, we could at least get the lines off the building to the line up and dream about a wireless Main Street. Is that it? Anything we could answer into the page? Ted?
Yeah, um. That's a million-dollar question that. I, I hear that one, that dream all the time. And, you know, trying to get the utility companies to to do that is is, as you probably know, is next to impossible. Um, I think everybody would love to see that done. Um, but there is a, I, there's a requirement in here for undergrounding uh your utilities on the marathon site anyway. So that's a start.
Ted, can you speak to the process laid out for the P U D and the engagement of the Board of Trustees at different levels and the engagement of the Historic District Review Board with the overall process led by the planning board?
Sure. Um, there was a lot of time spent on trying to refine the process to ensure that um everyone got a shot at helping in the development of the concept plan. So the way that this has been um structured is that the concept plan, um, you know, the developer gets the first shot at it. But um the village board uh and the H D R B are all um included in um in a whole process of uh reviewing and um uh providing comments on the concept plan. So it begins really with um an analysis of the site that the developer is going to have to um undertake. Um they're going to have to look at a a whole variety of of different things. Number one, they have to look at what the requirements are for um the code as it applies to new development in the marathon site. Um the other thing is that there is a a process for ensuring that um when the concept plan is developed and presented to the Planning Board, uh there is a mandatory um section of it that includes um public input. And it's it's called public engagement, uh and this involves um uh involvement uh by stakeholders uh that include uh Village Board of Trustees, HDRB, the School District, emergency service providers, neighbors, fire and police, water and sewer services, um other agencies. And so part of this concept plan, uh public engagement process is an attempt to get ongoing feedback and plan development um to ensure that whatever plan is eventually approved as part of a concept plan special use permit has been thoroughly vetted, not only by the Village Board and the HDRB, but also by other players that um can lend uh expertise and can help um you know, refine this process to ensure that it it's the best possible outcome for the village. And you know, all you can do is is make these rules and hope that everybody abides by them. Um and you know, that's really the intent here is to lay the groundwork to enable a successful public engagement process so that the development plan um that eventually is is approved um is something that the village is comfortable in living with.
And the discussion that that I recall also regarding timing is the idea that you know, one of the primary worries folks has in the school district take, if their if their kids moving in, can the school district take? Um so including the school district as a an early um participant in the process allows for future future planning, and additionally, because there is the possibility for phasing the plan so that it's not all at once, right? One of one of the things when you think about large developments is all of them happening at once, but that this be timed in a way that our infrastructure and our school system, et cetera, are ready for the expansion as it comes.
There's the holes, yes, there's a whole section that's devoted to phasing um so that it's properly phased and um so that the village and other um municipal service providers can um accommodate um any development that would happen there. In addition to that, I think it's also important to understand uh a couple of other things that were were built into it. Um one is a fiscal impact analysis to ensure that the mix of development that happens there is not going to overload the school district with, you know, a lots of children. Uh and that provides uh for an analysis of of how the development is going to um affect um tax revenues um and municipal responsibilities. Um there is a couple of other things. One is a solar feasibility study, so that gets back to your your concern about um you know, electrification and everything else. Uh so that would be included in the concept plan to ensure that uh there's an analysis of potential locations for solar panels, um uh you know, solar components and and basic uh electricity needs for uh for solar, um so that the development can at least address that. There's a section devoted um to transportation studies, two different transportation studies. One is uh a transportation impact analysis that looks very carefully at ingress and egress impacts on intersections in the village, you know, if there are going to be um uh demands generated by the new residents, you know, how is this going to play out with uh village intersections and everything else? How much can be assigned to people that live there that may um use Metro North and and so forth? How are they going to get in and out um safely? Uh what happens if there's a blockage? Um um and you know, uh Kimball Avenue is is blocked by a downed tree or something like that. How are, you know, are there any other alternative ways of being able to get into the site? Um if there was an emergency, so these are the kinds of things that are addressed by a traffic uh or uh transportation impact analysis. Uh and then there's also, um there's, as part of it, the second uh part of it is a transportation demand management study that takes a look at parking. It looks at uh things like bicycle use, um how the development can better accommodate pedestrians, bicyclists, motorists, transit riders, you know, even the mobility impaired, um how that's all going to be factored into um the development on Marathon. Um and uh uh and also the the strategies that the developer of Marathon would have to employ to reduce single occupancy vehicle trips, to reduce vehicle miles traveled, uh to promote transportation alternatives like walking, bicycling, ride-sharing and transit. These are all built into it. And so in terms of the contract with NYSERTA, these are the kinds of things that um they they wanted to see addressed. And uh one of the final tasks that um uh the village is under contract to perform with NYSERTA um is um is a study of the metrics. And how will these um um provisions that have been integrated into uh this uh new zoning, how will they reduce greenhouse gas emissions? And at the end of the day, that's what NYSERTA is interested in. How can New York State meet its goal of weaning itself from fossil fuels? And depending more on uh not only things like solar, electric, um but also how can we um uh address development in a way where we're not tied for the next hundred years to everybody traveling in single occupancy vehicles? Um you know, what other alternatives are available? Can we remake communities uh so that they're much more um pedestrian and bicycle friendly um than they have been? And Cold Spring is a very compact community. Um it's a simple, you know, you have less than four hundred acres of land throughout the entire uh village. It's an accessible community for walking, for bicycling. How can it be made better? And of course, one of the things, if you go back to um the work of the Special Board, uh one of the very first things that they did was to do a sidewalk plan for the village to identify gaps in sidewalks. How can they, you know, how can we better uh make accessibility of the villages sidewalks uh to pedestrians? Uh are there other ways to be able to re-stripe the lanes on village streets to ensure that bicyclists can bicycle uh in a safe manner on areas that are shared by cars? So these are the kinds of things that would have to be addressed um at least for Marathon um and um as part of this transportation demand management plan.
I would say there's also, and when we talk about impact mitigation, that responsibility pushes to the developer, right? If you're wanting to um develop in the village and our sewer is not sufficient, we need to have a conversation about the developer bearing the impact. It's a, it's a, it's a private development that would benefit from, can benefit from public um infrastructure, and we need to make sure that the public infrastructure is sufficient. Um so that's an important element, too. I also wanted to point out, um just for members of the public, Ted did make sort of a review and approval process map um that's included in right now, it's on one thirty-four, thirty-six in the draft. It is there are full copies of the of the printed copy available if you need them.
Yeah, if you'd like, I can share my screen and I have it in front of me on the screen. If you'd like, I can share it. Would that help?
There was talking in the room. You're gonna pull it up?
Oh, I actually have the um the chart in front of me. I can share my screen if you'd like to see it. Okay. It's within the um the actual, this is the actual contents of chapter one thirty-four. And so this is a a chart that I don't know whether or not you can see it. It's a lot of small type here, but nevertheless, this was, um this is the procedure for obtaining approval of a PUD within the planned mixed-use district. So it's illustrated in the chart below, and then it's outlined in a section of the code. Um so that's all incorporated as part of the um review process. You can see the three steps are shown here, and it's also, you know, it it's entirely possible that some of these steps can be combined. Um you know, if the developer is is reasonably certain that um they can meet all of the standards for the concept plan special use permit, they could include um some of the preliminary site plan of work at that time and can uh you know, wouldn't have to necessarily go through every one of these steps before they got to step two and go through every one of these steps before they got to step three. There is um flexibility within the code so that they could uh combine some of these that would reduce the amount of time necessary for the developer to obtain the approval, provided that they comply with the standards and the procedures, um that they comply with the uh special use permit approval uh conditions. And you know, that that gets into um, you know, a whole other section of this, but
If they, you know, if the developer chooses to do that, it's on them to um to them to comply with all of the steps. Um I, what I was gonna say is that those important um traffic studies and other kinds of studies happen early in the process, and so that's that's important for, I think, residents to know that it won't, it won't proceed if if the developer isn't able to comply with um with meeting the expectations of those kinds of um of those those analyses of it. With our our traffic or our utilities or um or with schools, um so that's that's a really important piece of the decision-making process.
And also, I would say that a lot of lessons were learned in this community um during the last large development that we experienced in the village during the Betterfield process. Um it was sort of a backwards process where details were looked at first and then and then the overall picture um and the analyses that should have happened earlier, um and and the public did not have access to the um an understanding of the overall impact until very late in the game. Um and there are so many elements that we built into this section of the code to avoid being in that position again. Um we want the village to be in the driver's seat, um and we want very much for the public to be engaged at every step. And I will say, there's also a um a certificate of appropriateness also happens um in that early stage.
Yes.
At the concept plan. So there's early buy-in from from across the land use boards. Are there other questions or comments from? Yes, do.
Um, what would happen if a large tract of land became available? Would it go through a, could it go through a rezoning to some, for example, if the highway department no longer occupies municipal lot designation at the waterfront? Would it have to go through a whole process to change it to something else, or would it, could it automatically revert to something like a PMU?
No, that would be another zoning change, so it would have to go through the same process that you're going through right now. Um zoning is pretty um pretty well regulated under New York State Village Law. Um there's a process involved. If you change one word in zoning, it has to go through the same process as, you know, an entire uh rewritten code like chapter one thirty-four.
John, do you have any additional comment on that question?
Um, I I would imagine that if if the village no longer utilized the highway garage, it's a pretty, pretty big piece of property. It would, like Ted said, you would probably want to rezone it, uh probably another PUD, but you know, that's that's a it's not really before you right now, but yeah, so the, just because you're amending the zoning code now doesn't mean it's set in stone for the next twenty years. You know, you're gonna constantly be reviewing um the comprehensive plan as well as the zoning and updating it and tweaking it. So if and when that ever happens, uh yes, you'd probably have to amend the code because I think right now it's designated as a civic use and there's not many allowable uses other than a municipal use, so you know, that's something for a future board to consider.
A question from, I'm sorry, were you finished, John?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, no, I I just wanted to, yeah, I just wanted to to um to follow up on on John because zoning is never finished. Zoning is never perfect. Um the zoning today in Cold Spring is not perfect. The zoning that's presented to you is not perfect. I have never in my fifty years of planning ever seen a perfect zoning. Um and times change. Um and so zoning has to be able to accommodate those changes properly. And that's why you go through a comprehensive plan process first to ensure that there's no sort of ad hoc kind of rezonings that occur without careful thought, without looking at all of the options available to you through the comprehensive planning process. And I think that's, so any any sort of redevelopment of the highway garage site would certainly have to go through a comprehensive plan study in order to determine all of the kinds of things that was done for the two thousand twelve Village Comprehensive Plan that led us to where we are today. That's what planning is all about. It's a, it's a dynamic process. It has to um, it has to account for changing conditions, whether it's environmental, social, cultural conditions. Uh zoning is constantly evolving, and that's why the legislature included uh provisions for updating it. That's why they included provisions to make sure that before changes are made to zoning, that they are done in a comprehensive manner through studies, proper planning studies.
Right, and and evolution is what really hasn't happened with the code that is currently on the books. Um and the comprehensive planning process in the village has gone on for some time. Um I think it, there's a, there's a phrase, analysis paralysis, that might be um applied uh to some aspects of the process over the last eighteen years. Um at some point, you have to make a decision and and come into compliance with your comprehensive plan, and certainly the the village has not updated its comprehensive plans as frequently as as frequently as other communities do. Um and you know, it's it's time to do that again um to update, to update our comprehensive plan. We all know that the town just updated its own. I think Laura was part of that process, right? Um within the last two years, the town has updated its plan. It's fine for us to do that as well. Uh but we have to finish the last one first. Ted, can you, can you speak to that in terms of? So what, one of the questions that someone raised to me on the sidewalk was, well, it's the the comprehensive plan is so old, why can't you just, don't you just scrap it and and start fresh?
Well
That, right, exactly. Like first you open your wrists.
I I, to that, I would say um planning does not necessarily have to be cumbersome. I have seen effective one-page comprehensive plans that are just as effective as voluminous comprehensive plans that are done. Um yes, in order for planning to be relevant, in order for your zoning to remain relevant, it does need to be updated on a regular basis. But I would ask you this question. Uh when I showed you the the, some of the key um provisions of the comprehensive plan um that related directly to preserving and enhancing the small-town historic, neighborly, diverse and safe character of village life. That's your goal. That's your overall goal. Does anybody really feel that, you know, Cold Spring is not a friendly, small, little town that people love to live in? You know, I mean, you don't have to go back and update everything. You can update a comprehensive plan easily. You can do it through resolutions. You can do it through planning studies. You know, what you have now, you have a good basis for working from there to other places. So you can amend the comprehensive plan in the same way that it was adopted. Um you can review it and you can make little tweaks here and there. It doesn't mean that you have to go through another six-year process to develop a new comprehensive plan. It means ensuring that your plan still meets your current needs today, and you may look at it today and you may find that some of the things that we've integrated into chapter one thirty-four, um they they are all consistent with a comprehensive plan. Uh but maybe you should start looking at other things um in the village and, you know, how you can provide for um a better balance in in things like energy for other parts of the village that have been begun in in the Marathon for ensuring that it's done in a more more sustainable manner. So there's plenty of things that can be done. They don't have to be complex.
Come into compliance with the comprehensive plan we have. I just wanted to note um we did have in the room with us, I think, five, well, six, seven um people who were part of the comprehensive planning process, um some of whom were special board members. Um one was a chair of the special board process. It was a tremendous community effort, um and we owe everyone a deep debt of gratitude. The comprehensive plan is on the village website, um and on the first page is a list of a hundred and twenty-nine names. Um many of you are here, so thank you for being here with us. Many of you are here, so thank you for being here with us tonight.
Can I say, I, I mean, you laid out at the beginning the goals of the comprehensive plan that guided this process and I. They were very relevant and I think that they guided the update very well. And so, you know, maybe there are parts that need updating of the comprehensive plan, but certainly it didn't. I think that they were appropriate for, they're appropriate for this code update.
Well, I, you know, one thing that I can say, and I, I think you're referring to Michael Armstrong. Is he there?
Yes.
He is. Well, say hi to Mike for me. It's been many years since I've seen him, but, you know, I think it was the, really the. The vision of that special board and people like Mike Armstrong and Adam Palazari and so many of the other members of the special board. That really worked so hard to ensure that that comprehensive plan was designed to. To, to be reflective of the vision that village residents shared. And so I, I think it, it will stand the test of time.
Any additional questions? Just one other point, as a former ZB member, you know, I saw how hard it was to apply the current code. We were forced all of the time kind of looking at the other ZB members. The circumstance of, of looking at a reasonable request and looking at the code and knowing that we couldn't. That we were just supposed to apply the code, you know, we weren't making law. And yet you saw how, how, how it didn't fit the conditions of, of current housing in the village. And so I think that the, the, the committee that worked in this particularly. Paul and Eric looked so carefully at, you know, what are the conditions now? What can we do to make? To align our, our expectations with, with existing housing. And so I think it makes for a much more rational code. For both residents and for the, the board that, that uphold it. So I think that that's a really important piece. I know we've been talking a lot about the marathon, but I think that that's like really important practical piece that we will all. You know, I think apply as we live in our homes and, and need to make updates.
Well, and, and I think another thing that's super important to mention is that code shouldn't be a mystery. The standing code is a difficult read and it's not terribly accessible and you shouldn't have to be a lawyer. Or a planner to be able to read your local zoning code and know what you're allowed to do on your parcel. And we, this, this version goes a long way toward making the language real and every day. And having a usable, readable use tables and dimensional tables.
That description.
And that is like.
Kind of mind blowing. It's, seems so simple. Should have been done before it makes so much more sense to see it with those descriptions that are normal language.
And consolidating repetitive language.
Yeah.
We do have members of the committee here. I would like to see if they have any comments, like board members comfortable with that. Would anyone who sat for that process, Donald or Eric or Jesse care to make a comment before we go to public comment?
I'll make a brief comment. I'm Eric Worth, one of the members of the working group. I just wanted to underline to the trustees, the way, the, the proposed code includes a number of new. New concepts, new emphases which are designed to respond to today, the concerns and crises of today and tomorrow. And yet they simultaneously reinforce what's historically treasured about the village. So it's a case of new thinking, not rejecting what's old, but reinforcing what's old. For example, I'll give you four quick examples. There are several references in the proposed code to. The design principles of complete streets that are embodied in the New York State Complete Street Act. These are principles to ensure that streets serve all users equally, don't prioritize cars, but include. All, all other users. Number two, affordability, affordability crisis of, a crisis of today and tomorrow, which the code. Partially addresses by encouraging smaller buildings. Placing, loosening the standards for accessory apartments. And this is again, returning, returning the. Sort of the, the structural goals to more of the way the village used to be, the way it evolved. Number three, encouraging, the, the new coding increases the emphasis on home occupations, live work units. This is again, a future looking, trying to address the. The climate crisis, the energy conservation requirements. But it also is returning to, to a village, the way the village was in the past. And number four, nourishing community, enhancing community. We don't want a bedroom, we don't want a bedroom village of commuters or absent during the day. And the new code reflects this in. In the use of form-based zoning standards, the language like, and the quote, the front yard and front porch. Should provide a transition to the public realm of the street. That kind of value is new and it recurs over and over in the new language of the code. And again, it's rebuilding, it's rebuilding the historic character of the village.
I would add to, to your comment, Eric, that. Home occupation is a reality more and more in the village, particularly since COVID. Many people worked in the village all day and realized it's a great place to spend the day. And we do have more people not commuting, but working from home. And I think that we have, have an opportunity for a very lively main street. And lively neighborhoods during the day that we haven't had for a very long time. You know, people used to live and work in the village. We became a commuter community and, you know, that has impacts like not, not being able to get folks to. Join the fire company, join the ambulance corps, volunteer after school, to be coaches on teams, et cetera. Having people living and working in the village sort of brings us back to where we were and creating opportunities. For that, for that to happen is a good thing, in my view.
You can see it happening.
Absolutely.
If you're on the street when the train comes in, there are not the hordes there used to be getting off the train. It's really sweet to see less and less people walking up the street because they're able to walk from, work from home.
And see more people working at coffee shops and et cetera. Any other code update members, Jesse?
Yeah, so Jesse C. Charles, resident at 13 Bear Street, a member of the zoning board and a member of this working group. After, after all of this, all the things that are said, it's really hard to imagine adding anything truly novel to what's being said. I think for me, maybe I'll just underline a couple of things that kind of are. Important to me about the work that we've done. So I think it's easy to, to kind of be overwhelmed by the scale of, of the work. But for me, the scale of the work is not the, the, the most marvelous thing about it. It's actually the care and concern that the working group members took. In translating the comprehensive plan into code that delivers on the values and. And the future that the village imagines for itself. And I think that is what makes me very proud of, of what we've produced. Not just that we put a lot of time and energy into it, but I think the way in which it was done. It makes me very proud about, of, of what we've done and the way, the way that we did it. And I think that, you know, despite my pride, that, and as Ted pointed out, the code is never done. I'm certain that there are things that could be improved in our draft that are unknown to the working group right now. And that makes this period of feedback really important. So if I can address my fellow village residents. I know reading code is nobody's idea of a pleasant weekend activity. Except maybe Ted.
And John, John enjoyed it too.
Yeah. But I think we made every effort to make this code parseable as possible. And I hope that we see continued feedback from residents over the coming weeks. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Jesse. Donald, do you care to add anything? Are you?
Well, actually Jesse took the words right out of my mouth. I'm looking forward to the comments from the public that. Some total of comments that I find in the public makes a better code. So I'm looking forward to people. If, you know, you might not be interested in, in a lot of parts of the code, but I'm sure you might be interested in the parts of the code that apply to your property. That you'll read with beta breath. So we'll be all be interested to find, to hear the comments.
And there are some questions that came in via email that I wanted to ask Ted about while we're in session. One was a, a point about funeral homes. And have we accommodated funeral homes? We do have one in the village on Parrot Street. I don't, two? My house, my house at one point, but not anymore. It is not included among, among the table of uses and that seems to be something important for us to have as a community. That's, anyone?
This was, this was, we did directly discuss.
Tell us about your discussion.
Sure. So we, we recognize the existence of the use in the village. We felt that there was nothing that barred its continued use. But that's. It would merit kind of a deeper and further discussion to figure out exactly how we wanted to layer in. That use across the districts that we have in the, in the plan. So the decision was made to, for now at least. Keep the status quo, which is the funeral home. It's not an allowed use, but in a residential district and it remains in a residential district. And we made no direct addressing of the, of the use.
It's a pre-existing.
Yeah.
Not conforming. And let me just. And another question I thought we started to address a few moments ago that I would like to, to talk about. To make sure that the board members understand the rationale. So the question of redevelopment at the highway site or at the boat club site. One, one question was raised by email, why not? Why not make these parks and recs? And the answer is, once something is made a park, it is very hard to redevelop. There's an entire. Process of alienation of parkland that would make redevelopment of those sites difficult. And so for the moment, because we believe that they do, both of those sites merit a real comprehensive public process. When we can look at multiple options as a community and determine what our, our, our values are for those sites. We decided to sort of use civic as a, a holding space in the same way that you're describing. Recognizing the use that's there and allowing for the possibility of rezoning as we look ahead comprehensively going forward. Does that make sense? And that is why Mayor, excuse me, Mayor's Park has, we now have a demarcation of the uses between. The actual parks and recs use and the wastewater plant and highway department. The last iteration that was put before the public in September 2021 had the entire parcel as mixed use on the waterfront. So there were no protections for Mayor's Park. And that's a, a real departure from the intentions of the comprehensive plan. Okay, are we ready to hear from folks? So we'll start with folks who are in the room. And then move to folks who are online. So is there any, sorry? Oh, yes. So, thank you. Three minutes a person, please. Please identify your name and address. And if someone, if someone speaks before you and covers what you've covered, please. Give us some quotation marks rather than repeating a comment. So would anyone in the room like to make a comment? Okay, go ahead, Michael. Name and address, please.
Yeah, Michael Reisman. I live at 30 Rock Street and I'm just gonna set my timer here so I make sure I keep to three minutes.
Oh, I'll keep you. I'll got you.
So, you know, let me start with, with positive and then I'll get to, you know, the issue that really concerns me about the process. So positive. And I'll focus on Marathon because I spent, as a member of both the comp plan and the Code Update Committee. Countless hours, hundreds of hours on this issue in this room, at public meetings, public hearings, meeting with the developer, all kinds of things. So I totally agree that a public, a planned use development is the way to go. I mean, I said that in a letter that I sent to the village board two years ago, that this kind of piecemeal approach to, to Marathon is a bad idea. That said. And this, this gets into the process issue, so. My problem with the process, the last three months, I'm not talking about the last 17 years, but the last three months has not been transparent. And I think that that, that is a bad public policy choice that this board has made. To not have open meetings. I'm not talking about necessarily every single time two members of the ad hoc committee meet. But to inform the public about what is going on at a detailed level. I mean, Ted's presentations are great. Hi Ted, nice to see you again. I mean, Ted is, is, you know, from the work going back to 2008 that I was part of with the comp plan. He is, he excels at explaining these things, adjusting, he knows Cold Spring really well, I think it's fair to say. But in particular, things like these analysis, the analysis of, of, and I'll speak to. This issue of the seven dwelling units per acre. So that analysis is something I had never heard about before. That really troubles me that that analysis was not made public before tonight. Because that would theoretically allow 77 dwelling units on Marathon. Marathon is about 11 acres, maybe a little bit more. So I know that there are other conditions. There's this 30%. You know, park, open space provision, but it doesn't have to be contiguous. So, you know, theoretically, there could be 77 units, which would be frankly, for the residents of the area. Rock Street resident myself, it would be disastrous in terms of traffic and, and, and burden. And we can say all we want about electric cars, about people not driving, but let's face it, we live in America, people will drive, right? That is, so I, I really call on this board to make public more information. That the ad hoc committee has created, there was a, there's a reference in one of the minutes I foiled recently. To a build-out analysis that should be made public so we can really understand. So that we really can understand in five seconds what the basis for the, and again, it's 13412. What the basis for the decisions that were made in that document are.
Thank you very much. Well done. Right on, right on the bell. Quick, your comments, others? We're, go ahead, Ted.
Yeah, what I wanted to say is that the analysis is going to be done for the seeker review process. Because before the zoning can be even considered by the village board, it has to undergo a state environmental quality review act. Review of whether or not this project, the change from the existing zoning to the proposed zoning. Will have any, any sort of an impact on the environment. So those are the kinds of analyses that will be included in the seeker documents that are prepared. Those are going to be prepared prior to the public hearing so that they'll be widely available. So people will be able to review them and understand what are some of the underlying assumptions that were made. As we went through and tried to figure out what's the most appropriate density, for instance. What's the best mix of different housing units? How can we best ensure that this development, whatever development occurs there, is going to meet the comprehensive plan policies? So these are going to have to be disclosed as part of the seeker review process. It's going to be done through a full environmental assessment form. So it's going to be a, you know, a document that will be before the village board as well as through. The village website will be accessible to anyone that's interested in examining the basic assumptions that were made. And there'll be a comparison in there of what would be the development potential under the existing zoning. And how that contrasts with proposed zoning. And so that will include an analysis of the existing uses such as lumber and building products, things like industrial uses. The R1 zoning that could potentially occur within the Marathon site if it were simply left the way that it is. And, and a developer did not want to do industrial, but wanted to do a residential development of the site. You know, what are the kinds of assumptions? If it was all single family under the R1. You know, how many schoolchildren is that going to produce? And, and how is that going to differ from any development mix that would include not only single family, but also two-family, multifamily cottage cores and so forth? So that's all gonna be together in a document that will be supported by standards that have been developed. And, you know, basically standards that are in, in common use for development of environmental impact assessment documents.
Thank you. And just a reminder, your questions are coming. Thank you. Um, and just a reminder, your questions are coming to the board and Ted, um, will turn to you as needed. Uh, thank you very much for addressing that one. John, could you please address the question of ad hoc committees, um, and the differences between those and standing boards?
Uh, well, an ad hoc committee, they, they don't make any final determinations or just, uh, serve an advisory capacity. So, um, there's the distinction.
And what are the requirements of an ad hoc advisory? Committing.
Um, requirements with respect to what, like the open meetings law? So I, I think generally they're, they're technically not subject to the open meetings law, I believe. Because again, they're, they don't make any final determinations, uh, it's just advisory.
Thank you. Okay, um, Tara had her hand up.
Yeah, Tara, sorry. That's okay, Tara, I'm on six Rock Street, um. I wanted to say that I really appreciate the switching of things that accessory dwellings are more possible. I've, um, I think that the idea of zoning the Marathon site so that it is required that there's energy efficiency standards that are much higher is also really essential and a good thing to require. I think generally, like there was a mention earlier about, um, us not pursuing anything that would, that would have low middle income housing, things tied to actual like numbers of income and just making more smaller units available. And I think that that's a mistake. There is nowhere for people that are, I mean, what are you even calling like middle income? Like, I don't see how anybody making like sixty thousand a year affords a place to live here. And middle income for Putnam County is forty thousand. There's nobody that lives here that's between, not nobody, but like the number of residents here between the ages of twenty and thirty is microscopic, um, you know, if they're living on their own, it's just sort of not possible. And it'd be great if we actually pursued widening that scope of housing aggressively in this community because I think it's an important thing to build out. And then I'm, I'm, the, the governor called on communities in a very heavy-handed way to like really vamp up housing near train stations. I think it's a reasonable request. I don't know how you can do housing and also say you can't have cars there, but it would be great to be able to do something like that. And the denser, the, like, more small dense plots with open land in between them seems to be much better than spaced out like boom, 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 boom houses. And I do think that the driving access to that site might be the, the linchpin to look at as far as safety and whatever. I live on Rock Street and I think we would have to take all parking off of our street if we were going to accommodate a larger number of cars flying through there. Cause and flying is the right word. I used to have chickens. People would be like, I almost hate your chickens. And it would be like, great, because there's a kid down the street that regularly wanders into the road. And I did have chickens that got hit by cars. And I was like, well, I have the chickens, you have the chickens, not the kid down the road that doesn't know how to stand on the sidewalk. Um, but yeah, it is, that is like a, it's going to be a limiter of some sort.
That's why we have that very early in process in a very detailed way.
And also thank you so much to everybody that served up on any of these planning boards, all the zoning stuff. Holy cow, a lot of tedious work. You guys are amazing. Thank you. Good to see you.
Um, I think.
Major comment about the, the, um, the Marathon, um, in terms of traffic. We've, um, um, when, when Michael says, I say too, this is America. And it means cars, you know, I mean, it, it's, it's, it's a reality. And it might be electric cars, still going to be cars. Um, we, we have it in there that, um, the developer can hire their own traffic studies, but they're going to pay for our traffic study. So we're going to have one too.
Advised.
And so, you know, we will, we will have something to buttress to, 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 um, to really evaluate what the conditions would be.
That's, that's something that has existed in the code already, but we're being, we're repeating it very clearly in that section of the code. So chap, chapter fifty-seven is all devoted to, um, the village being reimbursed for expertise, um, from an applicant.
Just want to say that really our neighborhoods internationally, different places, and I think in the U S too, that where cars are forbidden within a certain set of blocks. So if you made one access to Marathon and said, nobody can drive a car into it.
Bring that to the comprehend, bring that to the concept plan conversation. All right. Um, Ms. Early had her hand in the back.
Yes. Um. First question, the red line that was made available on four twelve was incorrect. The red line that was made available on four seventeen is not usable and is not readable. When can we get a red line that is usable and readable?
John, can you address the question of red lines and when they need to be available or if they need to be available? I'm sorry that you couldn't read it, um, but it, we, we all have the capacity to enlarge our screens.
When you enlarge your screen, you lose the two-page capability.
I see.
And the font that is displayed is, I'm going to say it about a six.
So you, you can also, you can also print the images that were, the, the documents that were made available to the public.
Interesting.
Right. John, red lines?
Yeah, I mean, so sometimes when you have zoning legislation changes, they do do red lines and strikeouts and additions. Um, I, I think when you have a comprehensive overhaul of an entire chapter, it's probably a little bit more difficult and gets a little messy. So it's not going to be perfect. Um, you know, but I, I don't know if it's necessarily required to have a red line.
Sorry, didn't hear what you said.
He said it, he doesn't know that it's necessary to provide a red line. We can look up, we can, John can follow up with that question.
I will certainly do a red line for you. All I need is a word version of the current code. I'll do a red line provided to the village. It's not a problem. Um, second question is comment, B four A is missing from the document and from the zoning map. Is there a reason why? Next question. Um, all historical references have been removed from the document. Those historical references are used for research and to determine why and when a change was made. Was there a reason why they were deleted? Why is there a maximum in the parking table? A maximum in a parking table makes no sense. It would say to me that, for example, I would be in violation. The district civic seems to be more a use than a district. Please consider change eliminating civic as a district and making it immune. The zoning max colors are unreadable, particularly two grays and the salmon and the orange. I can't tell the difference. And I am not colorblind, so that's not the problem. Why was B three changed from designated retail financial professional district to B two? Why was sixty-six faulting, zoning with B two to private residence? Streets, cake requirements and landscape requirements seem to be more the purview of the planning board and planning documentation than zoning. Streetscapes are streets, they're sidewalks. They have nothing to do with how I use my land. Same thing true for landscape requirements. The statement facilitate the preservation, blah, blah, blah. Um, it's not, does not seem to be appropriate. The facilitate the preservation renovation and adaptive reuse, reuse of historic buildings in according with village historic district and national district standards and guidelines. It's also more appropriate for chapter sixty-four than chapter one eight, one thirty-four. Table six A shows a one family dwelling is not permitted use in the ERC district. Yet there is at least one bill, one single family dwelling in that district. Marie, it's identified as.
Thank you, Marie. Time, time is up.
Jane, okay, so.
Marie, you've had your three minutes. You've had your three minutes. Marie, excuse me, you no longer have the floor, Marie. You no longer have the floor. Jane? Jane, you may proceed. We have a three-minute minimum, we have a three-minute maximum. You have exceeded it. It's Jane's turn to speak now. This is not a public hearing. This is a workshop of the board. You're welcome to submit all of your questions in writing and bring them also to the public hearing, but you had your three minutes. It's Jane's turn to talk.
Um, my name is Jane Tim. I also live on Rock Street. And I figured well, maybe it was held in, which is more alone. But my question is really about the, um, the trail plan that we talk about all the time. Does this local law update affect the plan for dog side? And, you know, the big walkway and everything? Is it permitted?
That's a state project, Jane. The trail is a state project. We regulate and establish local legislation for our zoning within the village. So where there is overlap in the village, the village is an interesting party under seeker, but that is not a project that, that is before the village. It is a state project. So our zoning is, is required to be considered. And this board is certainly advocating for state parks as the lead agency. Be very engaged with us, with, with all of our land use boards. They don't have to. They have superior sovereignty. They don't have to. But we think it would be a terrible idea for the state not to engage with our village land use boards, and we are absolutely advocating around that. Do you have a question related to one thirty-four, to the zoning chapter?
No, that one's.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the room? Mike?
Uh, Mike Armstrong, I live at Seven Morris Avenue in, in Cold Spring. Um, I wonder if the, um, if the, um, ad hoc committee or the board would consider having a flood zone, the exception to the height, uh, limitation, the height requirement, the height maximum. Um, I think there, everyone agrees there's going to be sea level rising, uh, probably four or five feet in the next fifty years. And, uh, I think there would be some merit in, uh, allowing, uh, an exception for heights in the areas of the village that are subject to flooding. Um, there may also be, um, uh, the, the flight, the flood zone exception may apply to other characters, characteristics than height as well. Um, the second thing to consider, uh, right now, there's a two and a half floor maximum for large residential. That's what's proposed. Um, that's a two and a half floor maximum height. I wonder if you could consider three floors for large residential. My own house has three stories. It would be a non-conforming out of the gate. And there's a lot of other, several other homes on the large residential, which are in fact three stories and they're non-conforming. Um, third item, uh, uh, would you consider, uh, the use of visitor center? Putting, applying, assigning that to certain of these zones. It's not clear what, where visitor centers are permitted use, particularly visitor, visitor centers with restrooms. Um, with, with that clear exactly where they would be permitted used in the zoning.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Anyone online? Hearing none. Any further discussion on the board? Let's talk about process. So we've had feedback tonight. We've had some in writing. We've had some in comment, Marie, if you're willing to provide your questions in writing, that would be very helpful. Um, we are scheduled for public hearing next week. Jeff, you want to talk with us about next steps from the clerk's perspective on process?
Excuse me, we have the public hearing. This has been submitted to the county. I think John could best. I'm going to defer to John as to if we make changes, what does that do as far as our submission to the county and the clock, the thirty-day clock with the county?
Right, so for, with respect to the county, the clock starts when it has a complete application. So that means, you know, when they have everything it needs to provide its recommendation under two thirty-nine M. So as long as there's a complete application submitted to the county, that starts the thirty days. Now, if during the public hearing process, if during the county process, I think the, if you make substantial changes um, to, to the zoning amendments, then, then there's, the question will come, you know, does it get referred back to the county? Um, if the public hearings close, the other question would be, you know, do you have to have the public hearing reopened? But for now, um, it's really just a ma- a matter of having a public hearing on the nineteenth, uh, obtaining the public comments. And at that point, the, the village board of trustees will then review those comments and determine, you know, what changes, if any, need to be made. And then the question would be, are they substantial?
And, uh, no, the public hearing relates to three chapters, not just one thirty-four, seventy-six is noise. Um, and one oh four is currently called signs and placards. Um, they are available on the village website, the drafts, um, given that they were, um, available a bit later, we may want to consider, um, extending public hearings so that the public has more time to review them. There was not much of a sign ordinance prior, um, so it has been built out looking at best practices, um, in other communities. Noise, um, the, the overlap primarily with the, with chapter one thirty-four is the cross-reference to the codes, um, are matched correctly. So the new names, then.
Yeah, the best, so going forward to process, uh, week from today will be the public hearing for these three chapters of the twenty-six that will be kept open. Um, right now, we're looking at a tentative date of May sixteenth. Um, to keep it open, open through and hope, hopes that will have received all comments back from the county and from the public and that we incorporated.
I'm sorry, you don't have the table, Marie. You, you don't have the floor, Marie. I'm sorry. Would you like to ask a question? Would you like to make a comment?
Refers to I one and R one.
It doesn't anymore. You can look at it online and see the revised version, Marie. So. Marie, chapter one. Chapter one. Oh, short-term rental. Yes, correct. There is a cross ref, there is a cross reference of short-term rentals. Ted, what is the status of the cross-reference?
Uh, yes, uh, the, um, chapter one thirty-four does make reference to, um, the short-term rentals uh, and to, um, to that section of the village code.
It is primarily definitional where there is cross-reference and those elements have been addressed in the work.
Short-term rental refers to R one and I one.
Understood. And when short-term rentals, that, when that comes before public hearing, that will be addressed.
I, I agree, but what is going is, it's one thirty-four. One hundred is out of date.
Understood, Marie. John, could you please explain what happens when a change in a code supersedes another chapter and how that is addressed? Maria's asking, what happens if you change one thirty-four and there's a reference to another chapter that has not yet been made? There's a, to a change that has not yet been made. What happens in that case? So what happens when I one is gone before the other chapter is changed?
Right, because the current short-term rentals have references to the existing zone.
Correct.
Okay, so, um, yeah, so so, I mean, it, it doesn't nullify the, the chapter one thirty-four, but it could potentially create some, some issues with the short-term rental law. So um, the sooner you update it, the better. I mean, you'd have to kind of do a comparison to see what's, what's closest to the zones, but, um, you know, the best thing to do is, you know, update one thirty-four and then I know you're working on the short-term rental, uh, changes. So
That's on its heels.
Do those immediately after, but I mean, it's not going to nullify one thirty-four. It may create some ambiguities, it could, uh, with the, the, the short-term rental, but, um, it, it has no impact on one thirty-four.
So next on our list related to code is, is one hundred. Um, Jen and John, the chair of the ad hoc committee on short-term rentals made revisions to the enforcement portion, um, and she needs to get that text back to us. Um, and so that chapter and then the changes that we need to make related to one twenty-six and one twenty-seven vehicles and traffic and parking. So that's, we get this off our plates and that's the next on the agenda. Can we go back to the, um, discussion about what is considered substantial? So if we make changes based on feedback in the next week or a number of weeks, is there, is there some kind of, is there some kind of threshold of what's considered substantial for restarting the, the um, county clock? Can you address that, John?
Yeah, so I mean, yeah, there are, there are cases on that more so, I guess it goes more, more towards whether you have to reopen the public hearing. Um, so with respect to the county, again, the, the, the statute. Um, so with respect to the county, again, the, the, the statute says a complete application. But, you know, it's, each board has to kind of go through that analysis of, you know, is this enough of a change where it could. Um, impact the county's comments. I mean, it's safer just to resend it over to the county and highlight the, the changes. Um, you know, that's usually the safest bet.
Is what we would do in any case, you know?
And because they don't necessarily have. Require the full month once we send an update.
Right.
They've already, they already have it. They, they would just need to look at that one, that one change.
Are you asking, would they need another thirty days?
Yeah.
If there were.
Right. No, I, I don't, I don't think so. I mean, most counties, the planners, you know, they kind of know the deadlines that the municipalities are under. So they try to work with the municipalities and, you know, if, if there's a change. Within the thirty days, you know, they, they could, you know, you could send it over to them and it may not change their comment letter. So, um, you know, I don't think it starts from scratch now.
Okay, see, thanks. Okay, any moving further from trustees?
It's a real appreciation for everyone coming tonight and giving feedback. Helpful.
All right, um, I'll make a motion to adjourn. So I can, uh, favor.
I, I.